Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 7th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Housing Choice voucher program.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for November 7th, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Prusell.
Here.
Sprang.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is update on Housing Choice voucher program. I will turn it over to Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Alexis Steger, Housing and Community Development Director. Tonight, we are going to speak specifically about housing choice vouchers. And I want to be clear about what that is. It is not synonymous with Section 8. Section 8 is actually overarching a lot of programs, and one of those programs is housing choice vouchers. So under our Section 8, the City of Dubuque offers a few different types of programs. And so the first one that I want to quick talk about, just to kind of get it out of the way so that we understand the difference, is our project-based vouchers. So project-based vouchers, we currently have 17 of them at the Rose of Dubuque, which is an assisted living facility. These vouchers can only be used in those specific units. You cannot live there and then take that voucher with you. You must be living in that unit to receive the rental assistance. Specifically at the Rose, you also must meet the requirements for needing the assisted living facility that is there. So those are the 17 project-based vouchers the City of Dubuque has. We do not have any at other locations. That is our only project-based vouchers. The others that we have are considered housing choice vouchers. There's specific programs underneath housing choice vouchers, such as the VAS program, which are specific to veterans. We have NEDs, which are the non-elderly and disabled. But they all work like housing choice vouchers in that you get to choose as the assisted person where you would like to live. So you must find yourself a unit, you find an apartment, and lease up. Now, that voucher follows you around as long as you are eligible for assistance. So you can move units, you can even move jurisdictions. You do not have to stay in the City of Dubuque to receive that assistance. You just have to be somewhere that the federal government has a housing choice voucher assistance program. So in the City of Dubuque, we provide housing for about, usually about 900 participants a month. Currently, we have a need for about six, just over 6,000. So HUD has identified that just over 6,000 families in the City of Dubuque would qualify for rental assistance under this program. However, we only get enough funding for about 900 every month. Currently, as you'll see up on the slide, we are only assisting about 760 households. What has happened is we've had several participants either take their voucher to go somewhere else, we've had other reasons they have left the program, and we have been unable to replace them with other vouchers. So we give vouchers out to more participants, hoping they're able to lease up. Unfortunately, with our vacancy rate, they're unsuccessful. So we are still releasing vouchers as quickly as we can to new participants to replace the ones that have come off the program. Unfortunately, it's, this year has just, has been unsuccessful. There have not been enough units for participants to find. So what we've actually found, unfortunately, this year at the end of the calendar year, is that we are at risk of giving back a million dollars to HUD because we've been unable to lease up enough people. It's actually about $960,000 currently today. We are only releasing 25 vouchers a month because we cannot find more units. So if we were to release vouchers to participants and they're unsuccessful, they have to go back on the waitlist. However, they don't just go back on the waitlist, they have to reapply. So it could be another five years if they're unsuccessful after a release of voucher, just because there aren't vacant units. So we are trying really hard to balance the difference between spending all of the funding that HUD has provided us and not putting participants in that situation where they just can't find a unit and then they don't get assisted. So that has brought our numbers down. When we look at an overall economic impact for the City of Dubuque, what that's done, the number right there, that is 6.2 million, at the beginning of this year when we were looking at the budget, that was 7.2 million in our economy. So we have dropped some million dollars in federal assistance that's no longer coming into the City of Dubuque, which is obviously a big impact. What that actually means, that doesn't just mean there's not a million dollars coming in, it means that our eviction rates are going to go up because the people who could be assisted cannot use their vouchers, and so they are at risk of eviction every single month. Every month, they can't make a payment, is a payment a landlord can't get. So we just see a lot more turnover of our low mod income residents, and then they replace with another one who's unassisted. So we do see that our eviction rates go up and our need for local services go up. So when we have a million dollars that can't be used out of the federal funds, we have our local dollars that have to be used to support our shelters, local hotel nights, et cetera, as we are trying to support people who need the assistance, just can't receive it. So let's just take a quick step back in how the program works so that we can really understand the roles that each entity plays. So this is just an overall rental assistance and how it works. So the City of Dubuque has a housing commission that oversees all of our Section 8 programs. They will recommend policies to the City Council, and they also help us monitor the plans, the annual plans and all of those policies. Anytime that we have anything come up from HUD, they will get that directive and help the City Council implement it, and they help the staff do that as well. So we have a housing commission that helps with that. Then we have the program administration, and the program administration is up to the Housing Department to make sure we're following all of the federal local guidelines, all of the regulations that come down from HUD, and administer the funding. So make sure we can get that funding out, get people assistance, and try to provide those affordable housing units for our residents. Then we have the residents themselves, so these become our tenants. They have responsibility under the program as well. So they must give us updates to their income, to their family information throughout the years as they're assisted. They're the ones who select the unit that they would like to live in. They also pay a portion of their rent. Assistance is not always 100%. The participant is to contribute 30% of their income to their housing situation. And then they have obligations that they have to also adhere to, and we'll get into those a little bit. Then we have the landlords. So they're also a piece of the puzzle. Obviously, the landlords select and screen their tenants, just as they do with anyone else. Then they can receive the assistance from us, and then they also receive the payments from the tenants. Since two of us are paying, we pay our assistance and the tenant pays their piece. They maintain their property as per Iowa law requires, and then they also enforce their lease and enter into that lease with the tenant. So what are some of the regulations that come from HUD as opposed to that we control? So HUD says that if you're assisted and you're receiving assistance, you can only be receiving assistance for one unit. You can only need one place to live. You actually cannot be absent from that unit for more than 14 days without letting staff know and having a reason for that absence. They also require that the tenant pays for 30% income, which we talked about. They also control terminations off of the program and denials to the program, and how those run, and how, what you must terminate for, and what you can keep people on the program under certain conditions. They also require rent reasonablest checks. This is where we just make sure that a landlord's not charging more for a housing choice voucher tenant than they would for a market tenant in the same unit. So we look for rent reasonability in the same type of unit. They control the income limits, so we get income limits annually from them that say if they're under this income, then they can be assisted. They require that inspections happen in the unit, and they also require that the city contracts with the landlord during the lease-up period. So there's a contract between the city and the landlord, and there's also a contract between the tenant and the landlord, which is termed the lease, and HUD requires that. So when we talk about family obligations, we talked about this a little bit earlier. If you're a tenant, you have to uphold all of your lease terms. So that is the number one thing. You have signed a lease with your landlord, you must uphold those terms. If you do not uphold those terms and you're evicted by your landlord, you will lose your assistance. You can have no other people in the household other than the people that you have reported to the City of Dubuque as being members of your household. Your criminal activity, if you have any criminal activity, it can open an investigation and could terminate your assistance. Your utilities must be on and current at all times. You cannot have your utilities turned off. There's obviously, they need to meet the income limits, so they have annual exams in which they must recertify their income. They do pay a deposit to the landlord. They cannot move in the first 12 months unless they've already been residents of the City of Dubuque, or they have a special lease term. They must uphold that first 12-month lease, no matter what, even if you were a tenant, unless you had a lease already and a landlord's accepting your assistance with that lease. And then on top of criminal activity, there is a provision that there's no illegal drug use that interferes with the peaceful use of neighboring units. So that's just a little bit different than criminal activity because you don't always have to have charges when it comes to illegal use of drugs in the unit. Then the landlord does have obligations, as we talked about. They do just have to follow all Iowa laws. Although it's a federal program, the federal program says you must follow all of your state laws, as it requires landlord-tenant laws. So landlord has to make sure they're following all the Iowa laws, maintain the unit, uphold the lease obligations that they are responsible for as well. They need to provide proper notices to tenants and the city. So if they're going to enter the unit, they must provide a proper notice that they're going to be coming into the unit, just as you would. It's an Iowa law. But they also need to provide, if they're going to provide an eviction or notice of non-pay on the tenant side, they need to provide those notices to both the city and the tenant so that we're aware of the situation and that we can either help remedy or prepare to terminate assistance if that is what's needed. They are required to report unpaid tenant portion of the rent, so if the tenant does not pay their portion of the rent, they do need to report that to the city. And then they also need to report any suspected fraud or unauthorized use of the unit if they suspect that that's the case. So on the housing choice voucher, so once everybody's met all their obligations, we have lots of opportunities for residents. Once they're assisted, you'll find that they are able to provide their own medical care sooner, they're able to get off food assistance. And so one of the programs that really helps bolster that ability as well, not just getting the housing choice voucher, but we have a specific program called Family Self-Sufficiency. And what this program does is a resident can sign up for a five-year contract, and they're just saying, I have some goals I want to meet. They may be education goals, they may be moving up in their workplace goals, trying to increase their income. And after that five years, if they've increased their income in any of the five years from the starting date, it goes into an escrow account. That escrow account is paid by HUD and accumulates over time for the use of things like a computer for that education. It can be used for car repairs if that's a struggle to get to work. So as long as they're increasing their income, HUD's going to contribute to that escrow account to help them meet the goals that they have, that they're working towards. The final goal is financial independence. Financial independence is not coming off of the voucher program, although several participants do. Financial independence is actually getting off all cash assistance. So cash assistance are those things like people get food stamps for just to fit funding. So that would be one form of cash assistance. But after the five years, you are required to be off of the financial assistance. That's one of the goals. So we have seen quite a few participants go through this program. We have anywhere from 70 to 150 participants at any one time. They graduate, they move on. We've been running this program for more than five years, so we've seen a turnover. But we have seen it be very successful. We've a lot of people gotten four-year degrees, different income, come off assistance. So it has been a very successful program. The other program that we have with our housing choice vouchers is a homeownership program. So a voucher does not always have to just pay for rent. It can help pay for a mortgage. There are some requirements for participants. They have to have had a job for at least 12 months and been on the voucher program for at least those 12 months that they held the job, unless they are elderly or disabled, and then there's other requirements for that. But basically, the voucher assistance then goes towards the mortgage payment so that they can build equity. So the goal of this program is to help people out of generational poverty and build the equity within their assets so that they have, can pass that along and pass that wealth along to their children. We have had minimal success with this program. We'd like to see more participants taking advantage of this program. However, this year, we've had two. In the past five years, we'd only had 10, so we're on par, but we didn't, we didn't increase how many people are joining. But we did have two very successful families get into homes this year, and we'd like to increase the awareness of this program. So we are doing some outreach with our tenants and seeing what's out there. And then all of the housing choice voucher programs, the housing commission, staff, HUD, they all have a lot of regulations and rules. So we're required to have a resident advisory board, and it actually is made up of all of those receiving assistance. And they can participate in this board, and they have to approve of plan updates. Anything that comes to City Council recommended from the Housing Commission also has to go to the resident advisory board. So as our assisted resident, you get to have some say in what regulations may or may not work for you as they're proposed to City Council. And then you'll see on your memos that you receive recommending any changes that if they had any recommendations or anything to say about what we're presenting as well. So going back, so that was just kind of a little overview of housing choice vouchers. The really, the thing that we've talked about often, and often City Council's seen, is data on acceptance of vouchers. As we saw at the beginning, it can have a significant impact on our economy, on our low-income residents if, for some reason, we just can't get people into units that are assisted. Just as a little bit of history, this was back in 2014 that the City Council reviewed, had a whole committee put together for Source of Income ordinance review. It was a two-year study. We got a final report in 2017 and had quite a few recommendations on things that we could do to either approve an ordinance or try to increase the amount of units available. What was ultimately selected were two specific options to do some outreach, some education with landlords to increase participation in the housing choice voucher program, and then the other was just to get a financial incentive package, mix of incentives, to increase the amount of units in the city. So as you know, we have actually just recently approved different financial incentives for developers to start creating new units. We did also try the, last year in 2021, to offer incentives to landlords that already had units to try the housing choice voucher program. Vacancy bonuses if they were to hold a unit for a housing choice voucher holder, and you know, they lost rent for a month. We had those bonuses as well. What we saw was those were not successful. We did not see an increase in the number of units. They weren't well utilized, even though they were out and available. We currently still have one of those remaining, and it is the, what we call kind of the damage protection fund. If they, somebody does rent to a housing choice voucher participant, and it does not just have to be housing choice vouchers, but any type of income from another nonprofit that's providing rental assistance. If any additional damage over the deposit is caused at the end of the lease, this damage protection can help a landlord to kind of revitalize that unit to get it back to its status beforehand. We have not had anybody use that, and it's been available since April of 2021. So it's still there, and it's still available. So we're really not seeing that as an incentive either for accepting housing choice vouchers. So what are some of the actions that we are trying today in 2022? One, a big push in 2022 is the education. We, as you know, state legislator said, you can't pass a source of income ordinance. We're preempting that. So we really focused hard on education and getting out information in our rental licenses that went out, brochures, what's the program like? And we also created a video for landlords, and in the video, you'll see landlords participating, those who participate in the program, what's it like? So I am going to show you what that looks like today.
There's a lot of people out there that just need a chance. So let's give them a chance, you know, let's get them in a place, see how they do.
More people should have their hearts open to believing in this program. That stability is something I feel like everybody needs. So it just, it helps you embrace what going to the next level, gravitating to go toward, knocking things off your list, and just keep going, climbing higher.
The choice voucher gives a person an opportunity for housing. That's one of the most critical things in the hierarchy of all of our needs. You're not going to get anywhere else unless you have that.
A home. Everyone deserves one. A safe one. And an affordable one. Well, to deserve and to have are not always copacetic, income often acting as a barrier. To help bridge that barrier, the City of Dubuque offers the Housing Choice voucher program to low-income individuals and families, and hundreds of area landlords support the program through their participation.
The voucher program assists low-income elderly-disabled individuals that income qualify. We will screen them for eligibility, and then we will issue them a voucher. Landlords are always guaranteed their rental portion from the Housing Choice voucher program. We will issue that payment the first of the month.
From guaranteed monthly payments to free inspections, the Housing Choice voucher program creates a structure that removes financial concerns and strengthens the relationship between tenants, landlords, and their community.
It's a good business decision for us. Maybe some of the HCV tenants might have a few more hurdles to jump because of income, but they're all human and they all, we all have the same issues and nonissues.
I lived at the Maria House. I was there twice. Even with the full-time job there, though, it was hard to fill that balance. It was still a struggle for groceries. I was relying on other assistance, other parts of the community and everything else. And then I was finally accepted into the housing where I was able to let go of some of those assistants. So it's given me a lot of things back.
Subsidized housing makes it possible for me to live in a very nice place like this. They're all remodeled and new insides, very clean. They're everything I need.
And if commitments like rent and upkeep go astray, the city and assigned caseworkers act as mediators between tenants and their landlords to help resolve issues.
You have a lot of support from the Housing Department. If we have an issue with someone who is maybe not keeping the place the way we want it to, we always give them a chance to correct the problem, but if they're not correcting it, then we will call and see if we can get an inspector to come out.
We specialize in building them relationships with the tenant, with the landlord, with the community. We want this to be a successful relationship between all parties. So we want landlords to call us with any questions, any concerns.
We're able to help hold both the tenant and landlord accountable for the issues that they're responsible for.
Misconceptions lead to a lack of knowledge and understanding of the Housing Choice voucher program. No different than open-market units, rent can match market rate. Tenants should be screened and given background checks, and lease agreements should always be upheld.
My inspectors have a unique perspective to see that, you know, we see inside all the units, whether it's market rate or assisted housing. Do some of them cause damage to units? Sure, but not at a rate that I would say is any different than that of market rate tenants.
The most invaluable detail to know is that housing choice voucher tenants, like any tenant, come from all walks of life. All ages, all races, all sizes, all levels of mental and physical health, all backgrounds. They are all human.
The one thing that's true about all of them is they need, they need the help.
Everybody's out there, anybody's out there. Tenants that would rent from the most exclusive places can be problematic. But we learn from the experiences, and I'm not changing any. As long as I'm owning the property, they're open to anybody who wants them.
When an individual is not stressed about finding, you know, stable, secure housing, they have the mindset to be able to think about my goal, or healthcare, or, you know, there's other opportunities when somebody's not so focused because the hierarchy of needs is we need stable housing.
A little help. That's what the Housing Choice voucher brings to individuals that build our community.
It teaches you not only stability, but it helps you open doors for a lot of new opportunities. Like for me, schooling was a hard one. I was never going to go back to school, but because of my housing situation and what it had done for me, it helped me to be able to graduate, to go to college. You just live happier. Your kids are happy. They provide safe housing for everybody.
I feel more grounded because I'm able to look forward to things such as buying the house and having that instead of jumping from house to house. I did that as a child. I remember doing that as a child, and I don't want my kids to go through that, and so this gives me that stability. There's so many other places that I thought that I would be, but I'm definitely glad that this is where I'm at now, and I'm still growing too.
Other renters without subsidized assistance, they're one pancake away from eviction. They're going to be out in a van just like I was. It's a, it's a great program for continuity of housing, safe housing, and I would encourage more landlords to make some, if not all, of their units available to people who need a nice place to live.
Together, the City of Dubuque and landlords participating in the Housing Choice voucher program can help inclusively provide security and stability to the residents who need it.
So that's just one of the things that we did here in 2022 is create a video just to, you know, let people know, let landlords know, what is the program like? Who are we helping? We've also done a lot of handouts, like we said, but, you know, and then we tried the landlord incentive program, which we were hoping would be more successful, but we are looking for other opportunities in 2023 to increase acceptance. One of those is with the financial incentives the City Council approved. There is a requirement that they would accept housing choice vouchers should they receive any of the financial assistance from the city. That includes urban revitalization area designations, urban renewal designations as well. So those are within those agreements to make sure that, you know, housing choice vouchers are accepted in those new units, and hopefully we'll just see that vacancy, there's more vacancies for those that hold vouchers. Another, another thing that we continually do is kind of self-monitoring to see where we are at. We're collecting data at all times. So we were always looking to see what other funding sources are out there from the state, from the feds that might help us bring more housing here to increase the number of units. When the state of Iowa passed the law that we could not do Source of Income, a couple Republicans came out and just said, you know, what we really need to do is increase the number of units available because then the market will take care of the problem. People will accept the vouchers. So City Council's done a really good job of, let's increase those amount of units. We are going to have a housing shortage, let's stop that. Let's make sure we've got a place to go, so we're going to be focusing on that in 2023. But we're not going to stop keeping the data. Just because there is currently a preemption at the state doesn't mean it continues, so we want to make sure that we're always keeping the data on the source of income and the effect on our program. So we're still keeping the location of assisted units versus all rental licensed properties to see which census tracts have fewer acceptance of vouchers at the time or fewer voucher holders. We're not seeing a lot of movement. One thing that we do expect to see in 2023 is an increase in the number of housing choice vouchers that are around Carver Elementary with the new Radford Road units coming up. So we're excited to see, hopefully next year, a lot more around the West End area, which you'll see here. You can see right now, Carver District on that left-hand side, kind of missing. We don't really have anybody in that district, but we're expecting that to increase pretty quickly. One other thing that we are, just as a, something City Council can do, but we have not had any movement on this, and we'll look at it in 2023, is we're still missing some relevant data. So 34% of landlords currently are... So 34% of landlords currently are, say they'll accept a Housing Choice voucher. That's 34% of units, not landlords. So, you know, is that enough? Well, it's really hard to know. Currently, we're seeing our numbers go down, so it doesn't seem like enough. People may be occupying those, those units that aren't assisted. We don't really know. That's, that's data that's missing because we don't know when units are vacant. They're not required to post with us if they're vacant, not required to tell us when they're vacant, if they will accept a Housing Choice voucher. They're only required to report it once a year with their rental license. Does not mean they actually will accept a Housing Choice voucher ever in their career as a landlord. So that real-time vacant unit information would be the, the next piece of information that would help to know, is 34% of units enough? Are we seeing any changes? We're using other data to kind of inform city council, such as lease up rates for Housing Choice vouchers. So we're using those indicator outcomes and data, but we don't really have the actual data to tell you, is 34% of units enough? Today, I would say no. We just, we aren't seeing enough people being successful in leasing up with their voucher when they, they've done everything that they needed to do to get the assistance, and they cannot find a unit. We also don't have rent rates for all units, so that's another thing that is missing, as a, a missing piece of data. What's available that's affordable? So you can accept Housing Choice vouchers, but if you are so far over the market rate for your rent, because we have such a low vacancy rate, someone's gonna pay that, and rent rates will continue to go up until we can get that balance back. So just because you say you'll accept Housing Choice vouchers doesn't mean that's actually accessible. So it is one thing that we're missing as well, is what are your rental rates? That's hard to keep real time, but it is a missing piece. And that is all I have for you tonight, other than questions the city council may have.
Actually, we're not doing public input at this time. We'll do that later in the, in the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Alexis. Appreciate that. So I'm going to start, questions, and then we'll go ahead and let everybody else jump in here. But the, so did I hear you say that 760, is it 900 that we can normally give out vouchers? And we're only at 760?
Right. So we were provided about $6 million from HUD, which equates to about 900 families each month. And we're currently, about three months ago, we were at 720. We're back up to 760. But yeah, we're, we're way behind what we were this time last year.
Okay. Is that common in other places?
It is, the vacancy rate is an issue. This much of a drop is not. We're on HUD's radar for what they consider mediation. We've been assigned another person at the region to be watching our market to see how they can lease us up faster, and they have all said you can't, that you're doing everything you can to work around it.
Okay. Nobody else in Iowa is seeing this? I mean, given the fact that there's, you know, it seems like a regional issue?
Sure. We've seen the biggest decrease. The city of Dubuque was doing very well with our lease-up last year this time, and HUD said, stop leasing up, you're going to go over your budget. We were nowhere near going over our budget, but they made us stop leasing up for four months. Four months. We lease, we release 50 vouchers every month to keep up with the amount of vouchers that leave the jurisdiction, those that come off the program, and they stopped that. So we immediately got 200 vouchers behind. So some of that was HUD's doing, but then the market doesn't support flooding the market again with those vouchers. So HUD did put the city of Dubuque in a little bit of a difficult situation when they did that. Other cities did not have that problem in 2021.
Does HUD recognize that?
HUD doesn't even know who's assigned to which PHA right now, and are all being audited. So really, right now, which way is up for HUD is in the future, not today.
That's interesting. That's an interesting challenge. The, the other question I had regarding kind of other cities, you know, we know the, the rates of, you know, you said 34% of units are available for Housing Choice vouchers in Dubuque. We don't know that for other cities in Dubuque, though. I mean, do we, do we know that number for anywhere else that is also under the same legislative functioning that we are?
So there are three cities that had passed a source of income ordinance that required acceptance, so they would have 100% acceptance all the way up until January 1st of 2023. So January 1st is when those ordinances will no longer be in effect. So that's Des Moines, Iowa City, and Marion. Iowa City is pretty close to one of what we consider our sister city for our PHA in size. The other two are Cedar Rapids and Sioux City, and they do not keep this data. So we do not have any relevant data from other cities in Iowa that have a percent of how many are accepting.
So good on us for keeping the data, but that's unfortunate that we can't figure out some other ways that people are figuring this out in the state of Iowa if they are. Okay. All right. Other questions? Yeah, Ms. Farber.
Yeah, Alexis, thank you very much for the presentation and for the descriptions of the various aspects of the different programs. I think that's important to note. You had mentioned that if people take the vouchers, they can go somewhere else. Okay. Does this leave, how does this impact our current numbers and what happens to those folks when they leave versus our funding, if you will, from HUD?
Sure. So when you take a voucher to another jurisdiction, that jurisdiction can decide if they absorb the voucher, meaning they start paying for it, or if the city of, or if they bill us back, and the city of Dubuque continues to pay for that voucher. They can do that indefinitely. So we've had a voucher that's been paid out of Oregon for 22 years. So the city of Dubuque continues to pay for it. There is no regulation from HUD that makes them absorb that and start paying from their jurisdiction. What most jurisdictions will do, though, is absorb within a year. Unfortunately, some of the jurisdictions close to us are very large, and to manage their budget, they will absorb all of those vouchers at the end of the year around October. And then that completely drops off our budget in October, and so we can't spend our budget, but they get to spend theirs by absorbing those vouchers. It's quite a flaw in the system. We have anywhere from 20 to 35 vouchers that we're paying from the city of Dubuque to another jurisdiction. What you'll see is significant changes in our budget. We used to pay about $60,000 a year in our budget for what they call port outs that we pay in another jurisdiction. We're closer to a half a million dollars today.
Do, does Dubuque receive people that have vouchers coming into our city? How does that work?
We do. We absorb them right away. So we do not bill back unless HUD requires it. When they told us to stop leasing up, they required that we bill back. We only had two vouchers that were affected by that at that time. But we absorb, but we really only get, you know, 10 to 15 a year that port in to absorb here. Usually what we'll see is they'll come from like very close and neighboring cities such as the county of Dubuque, because the county of Dubuque has their own PHA, and they'll port in when they move into the city.
Does word get out? Is it, is it common knowledge that you can come to Dubuque, get a voucher, and then move somewhere else? I mean, is there a network of people in the HUD program that kind of understand how this works and perhaps take advantage?
I would say that it's a common knowledge for those that receive rental assistance, such you can move around with your voucher to other jurisdictions. The city of Dubuque gets to, there is some leeway in how long you can require somebody to stay in your jurisdiction before they can, they can port out. So we use the 12-month period so that they can, so that we make sure we're honoring a full lease term, and that they have time to settle into the city and actually know if they want to live here, as opposed to quickly taking their, their voucher elsewhere. Places like Iowa City, Des Moines, they allow you to port immediately, so they could give you a voucher today, and you can take that voucher somewhere else. We do not use that.
So they have to be here 12 months?
Correct.
All right, thank you. It's quite an intricate web, huh?
It is.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Ruffel.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I thought that video was really awesome. So thanks for sharing that. And the other thing that I liked that was in the packet was the myth-busting and benefit sheet for landlords. Do you think those are the top reasons that landlords don't, the ones that don't, that don't accept Housing Choice vouchers? Or what would you say are the top three reasons that landlords don't accept those? Or is that too hard a question?
It's a little bit difficult. It's a little anecdotal, just because of what we hear from landlords. So, but we do meet with landlords on a monthly basis. So Dubuque Area Landlords Association does encourage acceptance of Housing Choice vouchers. They give some fee breaks for their, for their organization. And we do hear from them that sometimes it's just scary to start a program that they don't know. You are signing a legal document with the city of Dubuque for a federal program, and so that's a little intimidating for your first time. What we heard from a couple first-time landlords was, I'm so glad I did it, but I was really scared. I didn't know until I talked to another landlord who did it. What was your real experience as opposed to what I'm hearing in the community? It just wasn't the same talking to it. So we, we would like to use that a little bit in 2023 to start teaming landlords with other landlords that accept. And that's kind of what the video started with, where we have landlords in that video that do accept, and they give you the reasons that they do, and they're really good resources for what, what's easy, what, what could you run into? So I would say if you were to ask me for a number one, the number one is the fear of the unknown, and it's our job to break that down to make it less scary.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Spring.
Thank you. Thank you for all that wonderful information and what you, what your team is doing. Couple little things. I've been looking for, for my main job for construction. I've been trying to find some more smaller contractors to help me do things, because sometimes I'm not a carpenter at work. So I've been driving by this house on my block, or a couple blocks from my house. It's 2700 Block at Jackson. I introduced myself to the home, to the guy doing the work. Turns out he bought 2525 Central. Yes, you're shaking. You know that one. He definitely wanted, he definitely is involved with the Housing Choice Program. A younger contractor, a younger property building out of, I think he lives somewhere between Madison and Milwaukee, and he wants to buy more properties. And so I'm hoping that we can build a better partnership with somebody like that. I think the video, a lot of the information that you guys are creating is a good way for us to market the program, because maybe we aren't marketing enough. Maybe we've exhausted our, our possibilities with our current landlords, and maybe we need to bring in some outside help. Is there any way that you can kind of do some type of marketing with that? Like you can talk to other cities or be like, hey, we've got tenants, we could use them here. Is that possible or not really, Alexis?
Yeah, we do have quite a network of other public housing authorities that we, that we work with. We actually use some of their marketing materials, they've used some of ours, and trying to, to do that same thing. Like we're really trying to bolster the program, so what's working for you? So we do that a lot. One thing that we do is the successful property, successful rental property management class that's required of all new landlords. And we've started sending landlords back through it that have had violations or other concerns. Some of our big property owners send all of their, like agents and their, their administrators to this program, and we show that video. We talk about the program and usually break down those things, those barriers for the new, new landlords. And we see that that's starting to, to encourage some of the younger to accept. So we're going to continue that effort, but yes, we, other jurisdictions are also looking for ways to do this. So as is HUD. Some of the myth-busting came from HUD, and we're able to use it because it is so widely, so much of an issue to market the program.
More quick question. This might be too complicated to answer, and, okay, you can get back to me. Is there a way, since we know the demographics of our community are also changing, we're going to have, we're having a lot more seniors, can you specific, can landlords specifically market to seniors, say they wanted to do the Housing Choice Program, but it was for seniors only? Is that legal or not?
There is a 55-plus kind of carve-out, and I would love to look at Cora to answer most of this. I'll give you that general, 55-plus communities are allowed, but you have to stick to 55-plus. You can't then accept a family and say, well, and just this family. They have some restrictions for that. So there are specific laws that allow that, and Cora can...
The acronym under the fair housing laws at the federal level, we call it HOPA, which is Housing for Older Persons. And it's not a formal certification process, but there are two designations. There's 55-plus and 62-plus, and if you are a community and you meet the requirements within the statute for either of those age groupings, you can do some specific advertising. But you have to, we always recommend that people consult with their private attorneys to make sure that they are well within the bounds of that federal law, and they don't run afoul of it. Because if they don't meet the requirements, and then they are advertising specifically for seniors or to the exclusion of other entities, they may run themselves afoul of fair housing protections for other groups. So we just always urge caution, but there is a way to do some targeted marketing when it's a senior complex.
And a complex is more than four, I'm assuming?
I would have to look at the statute specifically for each to see if there's a, a number designated with it. I don't know that one off the top of my head, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Cora.
Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor. And thank you to you and your department helping folks get housing. Very important. A couple questions for clarity. So if we have around 11,000 units is what I hear sometimes, 34% of that is, you know, more than 3,600 units, and we have 900 Housing Choice vouchers. So that's four times as many. I mean, they're having issues, but it's also the renters, it's, they choose, they select. So my question, you said they haven't been able to find a unit that they want, is what I'm, I'm guessing. Are there no units available, or how many units, how many eligible units are available that they might, I know it's, they're available, but they don't choose them?
That's the data that's missing. So that is what we, you know, we don't know what's vacant at any one given time. We keep a list on our website, so we encourage landlords that accept to tell us when they have a vacancy so that we can also market their units. Every once in a while, we do the, let's see what's out there as a rental, especially when we have to evaluate if we're going to extend a voucher for somebody. So before we give them more time to look, we make sure they've had a, they've been doing a proper housing search, and that there's housing out and available. So we will do those searches. The two that I've had to do recently, recently being in the last month, one-bedroom units were extremely scarce. Nothing actually posted on kind of the most common websites, which are like the Zillow, the Facebook Marketplace, Craigslist. Those are your most common. Nothing available at all, so not even like a, no Section 8, you know, house, just nothing. And two bedrooms were the other really difficult one to find. Was able to find some two-bedrooms, but a lot, we had one out of the ones that we found that would accept Housing Choice vouchers, like on their advertisement, it didn't say no Section 8. So we do that periodically, but again, that's not good data. That's not a good way to track what your vacancy is. We're using the ancillary data that is lease up, how they're able to lease up, and how many vouchers were able to get back out onto the street to try to lease up.
Thank you very much, and I really enjoyed the video as well. There's only one part of the video that I was like, hmm. And that was when the gentleman was saying, you know, he's really pleased to be in the program, and those people who are not in the program, well, they live month to month, and they could be out. Well, a lot of people feel that, well, they're, these people are getting advantages that the people who are not on that program, living month to month, and they could be out. And so there's a, there's a, that's the only part of that video that I felt would cause maybe some hard feelings, because I've heard people say that people who are eligible for these programs have an advantage, and, and who's looking out for me? And so is what I hear. So, you know, I don't know if anybody else had that, that came to them, but that just seemed like, I'm glad that gentleman has, you know, good housing. But it does point out the fact that a lot of people have issues just getting, keeping body and soul together in today's world. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Welfler.
You touched on it a little bit, I think, when you talked about you don't want somebody to have to go to the bottom of the list, but a constituent brought it to my attention as far as how the lottery program has been difficult for them. Could you just, I don't, I know it's not an elevator speech, I know it's a little more complicated than that, but just the lottery program and how it works.
Sure. So prior to the lottery program, our waitlist was opened about once every two and a half years, and you would have one day to apply, and you would be selected in a lottery, just like we do today. And we'd select anywhere from 2,000 to 3,000 people to be on that waitlist. And until that, that waitlist was exhausted, we could not reopen that waitlist. So it was about two and a half years last time that, before we opened again. And what we saw is that it's really difficult for people to continually give you their information on how to contact them for two and a half years. So by the time we got to the end of the list, we weren't be able to help anybody, we weren't able to get vouchers on the street, people were getting kind of lost. able to get vouchers on the street, people were getting kind of lost in the system, and they lost their opportunity. So we switched to a monthly opening of that waitlist, and we only accept those that we can serve within the next three months. So it can be anywhere from 25 to 75 people that we're serving within three months currently today. So we open every second Tuesday of the month, and it's for an entire day. Everybody applies that, and it's online, you can also stop in, you can submit paper copies. And then a, the software does a lottery system and just randomly selects who gets to go on the waitlist. And it's 25 to 75 people that get selected. We're averaging about 400 people every month that apply. So out of the 400, potentially 75 of them end up on that lottery. There's no preference, so everybody has the same footing. If you're not drawn, you do have to apply again. Our software keeps your information, so all you have to do on that next month is log in and say, yep, I'm applying again, and hit the button. All of your information's there, you're just basically verifying that nothing's changed to make sure we have your most recent information, and you get run into the lottery again the next month. So what can happen is that, just like the other one, if, it could be two and a half years before you get selected. We hope it's not, because the numbers are better, the percentages are better based on how we run our program, but it could be two years that you're trying to apply every single month for assistance before you get pulled.
Well, and the concern obviously is that you're dealing with folks that are looking for secured housing and don't probably have a very available internet capacity on one day that they may not be at work or may be at work. There's so many levels in which this was brought to my attention that I had concern with, and I know that it's a tedious process, but that, to me, seems so inequitable for a population that struggles. Just asking people to have internet access one day a month, or be able to walk into an office one day a month. I know there's no easy solutions, but obviously I think anybody can appreciate the difficulty of that situation. The only other question I had is, is there anything we can do to not give back $960,000? You summarized it a little bit, but specifics down and dirty, what can we do?
Currently today, nothing for that $960,000, other than hope that HUD, every once in a while, every few years, will release the ability to keep your money that you had from the last year in what they call HUD-held funds, and hope that you can spend them the next year, and hope that we can lease up significantly at the beginning of next year to use that, that same funding. It is, if they do not do that, they claw it back to about $250,000 in that HUD-held funds, and they just take it. The problem is they not only take it from this year, your budget next year is affected as well. You will not get that $750,000 back. So today, we are just hoping that HUD releases an application period for those that are unable to spend all of their funding due to some low vacancy rates. Hopefully, it's a big enough issue within the nation that we see HUD do that. That's our best bet for the city today.
Is there anything as a council specifically that we could do locally?
I'd say the encouragement of accepting the vouchers that we have out there, because we can release more vouchers to the street if we can get some more vouchers accepted. So that would be one. We are currently looking at options with HUD for what we consider preference points for people living in units, that we can lease them up quicker, because you're already in the unit and your, your landlord's already going to accept it, they can just sign on the line and the funding starts. If you don't do that, it takes about 90 days to lease up. So that's why I say today, November, we can't make a difference in our budget, because it takes about 90 days to pull somebody off a list that doesn't have a lease in the city of Dubuque. If they do have a lease and their landlord doesn't accept it, they still have to find a unit, so it's another 90 days. So really, just right now, it is encouraging landlords to accept, especially if they already have a tenant that they're happy with, before they say no, if they do get assistance, connect with us at least. Sit down with us for 10 minutes, see if it's worth it. That's the best we can do right now.
Thanks.
All right. Well, Alexis, thank you very much. This is a continually frustrating issue. I mean, you have such a huge job with the, the department that you have, and we appreciate the work that you do. I, I know that you and your colleagues are working as hard as you can. It's frustrating when you have a federal department that puts you in a position and then leaves you there and says, well, have fun in that position, and doesn't really do anything about it. I find that very frustrating, and I'm looking forward to continued conversation about that, because on our end, you know, going back to Ms. Wethel's last point here, I mean, on our end, these housing incentives that you encouraged us to adopt, and we did adopt, I think are a huge help. I mean, on, on so many different levels, I think this is going to be, our hope is that it's game-changing, but, but it really, it, and we're seeing some momentum, but at the same time, you know, it, it's not the only answer. We need, we need help. We need help from the federal government, we need help from the state of Iowa, we need to work together on this. And it's frustrating when we don't. It feels like we're doing what we can here, and then on other levels, those levels of government are just, just throwing barriers in the way, whether they know it or not, and that's frustrating to me. And I think to a number of people at this table and a lot of people in the community. Well, we are out of time for the work session, so we will thank you very much for the time and spending so much time answering our questions. There was a request for public comment during this work session, I just want to let you know that does come in the next part of the, the next meeting. We're going to start that meeting at 6:30. So for right now, since there's no more business in this work session, we are adjourned.